Welcome to the Batesville City Council, a lawmaking body for the city of Batesville, moving the city forward. Mayor Rick Elenboll, City Clerk Denise Johnston, City Attorney Tim Meitz and along with council from left to right Paige Hubbard, Landon Reeves, Dr. Scott Frederick, Brittany Bennett, and from right to left Fred Krueg, Julie Hinkle, Chris Poole and Dr. Doug Matthews. The mayor and council welcomes you to the meeting.
Okay, it's now 5:30 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Nick Baxter to open us up in prayer.
Yes, you will, let us pray. Hallel, Father, the word says, "If we'll call upon the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we can be saved." Now, I lift this council meeting tonight to you as an instrument to govern the city. Thank you for those who've been called to serve as council, attorneys, clerks, mayor. I also pray for those who served to protect, laying their lives on the line for us daily, here in our town and around the world. In these times of concern, I pray for the rising up and filling those currently in leadership of courage and wisdom. And we lift to you, Steve Bryan Bennett, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, our King.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, would you please verify the role?
Yes, sir. Council members Hinkle and Reeves are absent.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Two meetings, actually.
Two meetings, yeah, the last two meetings, we had the special meeting.
Sorry.
Have a motion, who seconded? Okay. Motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Okay, next on is citizens' comments, and comments should be no longer than three minutes in length and must pertain to city business. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, yes, please come forward.
I'm sorry, just come up here and just take you a seat there, give us your name, even
though I know you, but give us your name and address, please.
Lee Poe, and my address, 1457 East College in Batesville.
Okay.
Okay, and I just wanted to comment on the commercial zoning across the street from me, 14th and College, that has been put for the zoning commission and approved, but I've told it has to come through you all first, and just I'm in opposition to that in my neighborhood. I don't even know what to say, but I could talk about it for probably 23 minutes, but three minutes would be, I was like, I could talk for only three, but just quality of life for our neighborhood, talking about and changing all that zoning. I was told it may be like a gas station, something like that, and so I've lived there for a good 12 years with my son, and I really don't want to live across the street from a gas station or residential area, because we can see what happens to property in town that is residential and butts up next to commercial and what happens to the property value there, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nick Bryan.
It's three minutes, I'll start as soon as I start speaking, is that how it goes?
Go ahead and give your name and address.
Okay, my name is Brian Norris, I live at 109 Big Pine Road, Batesville, Arkansas. So today, I stand before you with the same grave concerns that I came to you previously about. The last time I came, I had reservations about giving my name and address, which were confirmed after that. Well, after sharing my name and address, it's the first time this could potentially put my family in harm's way. This was confirmed following my previous speech with you, as me and my family experienced intimidation tactics intended to instill fear, individuals drove by my home, stopped, waited, even came to my door and recorded on my Ring camera. This behavior aims to make us self-censor for fear of our safety. To those who employ such cowardly tactics, I say, "Let those cowards come." But if you bring it to my doorstep and threaten my family and me, books will be written about the savagery which I, which will be witnessed that day. My call sign from the military was chaos. This was earned during my deployment in RCE, Afghanistan, 2004. We were tasked with breaching a colot, which is a mud-bricked building built up. The fortified structure of the main door we rehearsed that we were going to breach into seemed too dangerous for us to breach it. My platoon leader looked at me and he asked me one question. He said, "Norris, can you go through the wall?" Resoundly, I said, "Yes." I took about 10 yards back, my platoon stacked behind me, and I went through the wall, suffering a concussion and dislocating my shoulder, landing in someone's kitchen or living area. The platoon leader took care of the threats afterwards. After neutralizing the threats, the name was stuck with me for the next 20 years. This is who I am. When I commit, I give it everything. My wife and I moved here to raise our kids in a safe rural area, Batesville seemed perfect on paper, but we soon discovered a more sinister danger. Two years ago, men dressed inappropriately for public, pretending to be women, danced provocatively with children on stage. Alongside another new resident, we researched local laws and found several ordinances prohibiting such actions. Yet these laws were ignored. City officials twisted definitions and performed mental gymnastics to justify an action. Despite months of effort, we were met with officials unwilling to enforce the law, likely out of fear that I alluded to earlier. One city officer admitted to enforcing those laws could cause a riot or cost him his job. We turned our attention to state law. Working with representatives and senators, our efforts bore fruit with the passing of SB 43, which is now Act 131, signed into law by Governor Sanders. This law clarifies that definition, which this city council was so concerned about, and the definition of sexually oriented events, adult-oriented performances. It explicitly addresses these events cited by the city. This is tyranny, a small group imposing its ideology on a community. Batesville Pride, led by Shannon Hicks, a pled-out criminal who once embezzled $23,600 from the American Cancer Society, is planning yet another drag event on June 15th. This organization shows zero respect for the law, acting with impunity. Days after my last speech, this group prepared to hold a drag queen event in which they served alcohol to minors. They were going to serve alcohol to minors, and it was only after my speech here that we stopped them from selling the alcohol, or the city did, I'll give you credit for that, they stopped them, but the show was allowed to go on. I have more, but my time has expired, and out of respect for you and your time, I will stop. Thank you all.
Okay, has anyone else like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Reverend Gerald Heinecke, I'm pastor at Hope Lutheran Church here in Batesville. You want my address? Is that correct? 45 Chisholm Trail, Batesville, Arkansas. This event was brought to my attention, and it is important for us as Christians to speak up in our society today. What was once considered, with what they once first tried to bring upon us as a acceptance and tolerance, has now become where we are now the ones who are being unaccepted and intolerated because we are speaking up. We have a responsibility to speak up and say that these events cannot be going on in our community, especially on our main street where they are sexualizing our children. These are not good acts, these are immoral acts. We are called to be, we are called to stand up and confess to faith. We are called to live, and we are called to speak what is good and right and true. I do not know your religious backgrounds, that is inconsequential at this point. What is consequential is that we are called to do what is good and right. And good and right means that we continue to uphold family values. These are not family values. The redefinition of marriage is one such thing. We cannot redefine marriage. We cannot continue to promote homosexuality and drag queen acts, transgenderism as well. All of these things are not good, and having such a performance done on our main street says that Batesville approves of it. This is not what Batesville wants to be known for. Batesville wants to be known as a wholesome community, a place where we will live and raise our families. So I would continue to encourage you to not allow these things to occur and to adhere to laws that have been put into act in this regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone, yes, sir?
Excuse me, my name is Richard Allen Graves, Lieutenant Colonel, retired US Army. I moved to Batesville, I guess like other people too, 10 years ago, because I was looking to get away. I was looking for a place on a mountain to get away from the world after having served the country for 26 years. I want to tell you what I did, I did a lot, I saw a lot, and I felt a lot. I did it for the United States of America, for the flag, for Mom and Dad and American Pie, I believed in all that, not so much anymore. There's a lot of reasons for that. I've stayed on my mountain pretty much for the last 10 years, and this is my first foray into public governance. I decided 10 years ago I didn't want anything to do with humanity anymore because it wasn't worth. Recently, I've changed my mind on that. Apparently, I've got two minutes and 20 seconds to try to explain that to you. Not too long ago, I was reading that we were going to move the VFW out. The VFW has its warts down there, no doubt. I've been down there, I think I was their president for 10 days, and I resigned. Be that it may, the optics of removing the VFW, I don't know if y'all thought about where they might go, I'm sure you don't care, but I would ask you maybe to think about it a little more than a parade celebrating whatever they celebrate, just like I went to the VFW to actually ask, "Look somebody in the eyes." I looked somebody in the eyes, and I said, "Are they really going to throw y'all out?" North, south, sure enough, and there's nothing they can do about it. Well, this Sunday, somebody told me, "Last year, they had a festival promoting homosexuality," and I thought, "Nah, I don't think so, not where I live at." So I had to come here and see it, I don't know how this works. Well, I guess they must have really had one last year, listening to folks speak. So I would just ask y'all with the minute that I have left, to try to reflect on when we opened this meeting, and bowed our heads, and all of y'all did it because I was watching you. Now, some of y'all didn't keep your heads down, and that's on you and the Lord, if you have that kind of relationship. But if you do, I would try to echo that man and what he said, and then I would ask you to call on our Lord, ask him for some guidance on it, and just ask yourself, "Does it seem right to throw out the VFW?" If y'all know what it stands for, it's Veterans of Foreign Wars, okay? The folks like me with titanium in my body and chaos behind me. Or do we want to have festivals promoting men wearing dresses? Thank y'all, have a good evening. I'll pray for you either way on Sunday.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll go.
Hello, my name's Donna Willis, and I've lived here all my life. I've been really, really upset lately about reading the paper and seeing our new chief or whatever, and talking about the VFW being condemned and all this stuff, that's not right. It's not right. I'm a member of the auxiliary, I'm also a veteran, and I just could not believe what I was reading. I just don't know what else to say without crying. I mean, it's just...
Go ahead, you're fine, you're fine.
That didn't restart, I'm sorry.
It's just too, it's just too much, I just cannot, I mean, I understand that y'all want that land for, you know, whatever, but condemning it, that's not right, that's not right. That's just like putting people out, you know, and we don't deserve that. We do a lot for different places. If you want a long list of what we do between the auxiliary and the VFW, be glad to get you one. It would be a big mistake to somehow make it to where we couldn't survive, you know, it's not, it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for, you got a comment?
Yeah, I have it, yeah.
Okay, please, yeah, please come forward.
Written one for you, copy for you. My name's Jackie, and my husband Dave Hanifin. We live at 2010 Clearwater, Batesville, here in Arkansas, and about, just last week, we just had Mother's Day. It was not a month that consisted of parades and festivals. Most people individually celebrate their mothers within their families on a date, you know, you think about all these days we have, we don't have a month, we don't have big festivals, we don't have, it's, you know, excessive. So the whole gay pride month with festivals and parades are excessive. The definition of pride is arrogance. So to make a public display of your sexual preference is not useful. It would be best to have their celebrations within their families and not on public display. Gay pride parades and festivals are not a wholesome family event, it should not be in public. They're adult entertainment, I know, I've seen them. Gay pride celebrations usually consist of indecent exposure, fetish wear, and sexually explicit clothes. Please vote no on any public gay pride agenda. Other states are following suit now, Wisconsin, Utah, Ohio, Florida are banning the gay pride agenda, and please enforce indecent exposure. We do love these people and want no harm. It is a pride issue, Proverbs 16:18, pride goes before destruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one more, please come forward.
My name is Mark Greenwood, I live at 600 Miller Creek Road. I understand the need for equal rights and protection under the law with the homosexual community back in the 70s when they were pushing that. So that's not my issue. My issue is, ever since that time, the homosexual community has purposely tried to break every moral barrier they can break. My question to you, all of you, is what are you going to allow next? They're already pushing bestiality, they're already pushing mothers having sex with their sons, you know, and I'm asking you guys, man, why don't you draw a red line in the sand now? Stop this nonsense. I'm just appalled that you guys would even let it go this far. Do you not see that that's their goal, is to break every moral barrier that they can break? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on, new business. Chief Scarborough, please come forward.
Start off by saying, thank each of you for this opportunity. So as, as I've done in the previous, I've given you the little packets with all the stuff. We had 991 calls for service, which is up from last month, 48 accidents, 15 arrests, and 52 incident reports were made. I've got all that broke down for you, and I have a lot of stuff here in the back, but I wrote it down so you guys could have it and look over it at a later time. I know you didn't want to go, you wouldn't want to go through all of it during the meeting, but we learned the computer, the computer stuff we was going to put in the vehicles, and the third party from the manufacturer that shipped it to us shipped us the wrong components. We didn't know this until we got ready to install it, so now we're trying to get that rectified so that we get the right equipment, and they're saying it may be end of June before we get it. The master gardeners have elected to maintain the flower beds around the police department because they know that we'll let all the plants die if we do it. So the officers are currently working on designing a new badge and patch for the police department, something that we've never had before, was something that was original to us, and they're working on that. We're hoping by the first of June, they'll have the design that they want picked, and then we'll start trying to filter that in. And then there's some talk about officers wanting to take on vehicles. I've kind of explained a little bit in this packet for you. Also, in the back is a sample policy that we've looked at using for the take-home vehicles. If you guys so choose to allow that to happen, the city handbook says that it's a mayor and a council decision, it's not my decision. So the biggest issue we have on it is deciding a radius of how far we'll allow the officers to live away from the department and take a vehicle home. And I put some examples of what other departments around us are using. And there's some talk of us changing our duty weapons over and with an optic and stuff, but I explained a lot of that in the packet for you guys to look at at your leisure and come to a consensus at some point.
Okay, chief, and, you know, what I would like to do is, we've had some ARPA funds, and I think it would, I would like for us to go ahead and have John to go ahead, and I don't know if you get beds on it, or, but I would like to go ahead and actually try to upgrade their guns at this time, their weapons, and I guess that's the Glock 47, is that what you're looking at right there?
Yeah, the optic that we're wanting to go with has to, has a plate it mounts on.
Right.
The current ones we have are, they're not capable of having that.
And these will have laser sights as well?
It's a, no, it's just a hologram sight. It just, it helps officers be more focal, be able to see more in front of them, instead of being focused on one little sight picture. Also, with us older ones, it helps with the eye sight, diminished eye sight, so.
How old are the current rubens that y'all have?
They're, they're seven years old, I think. There's nothing wrong with the ones we have, they just, they, the optics that we want won't attach.
Will these have a trade-in value?
They have a trade-in value, yes, sir, and I put that in there. I think it's like $275 is what they'll buy back ours apiece.
Okay.
And then they'll turn them around and sell them to the officers who want to buy them for 300.
I understand. So you're looking for a motion? Yeah, please. So moved. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of moving forward the purchase of the new weapons, signify by saying aye. Oppose, like sign. Okay, chief, was there anything else we were looking, I know we're looking at some signal light things, and other some ARPA things that...
There was, a mayor and I...
We may be able to bring that up later.
I may have left some of it out, and I also had a quote for some new radars, I didn't bring it with me, I got in a hurry. The task force had a search warrant today, and they recovered about 24 pounds of meth, and we were busy with that, helping them guys, so we didn't, I didn't get everything in here I wanted to.
And that was in the city, that's correct?
That was in the city, yes, sir.
Yes, sure was, so, good job, everybody, yeah. And I guess the next thing that we want to discuss, I have also reached out to a few of the mayors around, actually Mountain Home, Paragool, Mountain View, those are three that I actually visited with, and I know chief has reached out to several about the possibility of taking these home. I know Paragool, they've been doing this since 2015, and it's been a good policy for them, it kind of, especially with the officers that are here in town. They say they take more pride in their vehicles, keep them much cleaner, and it also maybe deters, you know, in neighborhoods when you do have an officer with a marked vehicle. So I'd like to encourage the council at least to consider this, and we've talked about the possibility of doing, I think, a 15-mile radius.
Yeah, I think that's a decision that I would ask you guys to make and not put on me, but that is, that's the common for all the agencies we contacted, about 15 miles, and I think we only have like maybe three, four officers that live past that, so.
Is that 15 driving miles or 15 air miles?
Driving miles.
Okay. Just wanted to find it. We'll have a dispute later.
Can we do this tonight?
Yeah, we could, I mean, you know, I think, unless you guys want to think on this or something, I think it, each mayor I talked to said it's been a very, it's been very good for their morale and giving the officers that opportunity.
I would like to make it mandatory that they, to go watch their kids play two-ball low-league, they take it out to North Complex and park it out there, because right now, there's 700 people out there tonight watching kids play ball, and it wouldn't hurt to have three or four police cars parked out there. I'd really like to see that. Now, as far as taking it to liquor stores or something like that, of course not.
That's covered in the policy.
Yeah, I believe that's in the rest of the policy, there's a lot of, yeah.
And here's something else that brought to my attention, if there's going to be some severe weather or something like that, that officer has to drive all the way in town, jump in his vehicle to go out there, and if there's some kind of emergency, I'd like to have his vehicle with that wonderful new weapon we just authorized to get off and get with it, you know, so I would like to put this to bed tonight and let it take these vehicles home. Matter of fact, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, have a motion. Second, Dr. Matthews, any further discussion? I also would like to have in that motion that the chief and the mayor will have the discretion, if it's 15.5 or 16 miles, that we can make that decision.
Is this every officer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, it'd be scattered all over the city.
But we have it up vehicles, right?
We, we're probably three or four vehicles, probably three vehicles shy of every, of every officer having an assigned vehicle.
So what would we do in that situation?
I don't have an answer for you.
Are they, are some of the past 15 miles, there's some that live?
There is some that are past.
Yeah, so that should take care of it, and we'll eventually probably work into those other three, so.
Let's get through a motion here.
So we have the motion.
We'll start discussion for the motion, Fred.
And a second, any other further discussion?
Well, are you going to amend your motion per the mayor's request?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, please, yes.
All right, all right. I just want the car scattered out there.
Yeah, but I, I think, Mr. Krueg, I'm just, to allow myself and John to be able to, Chief Scarborough, to determine if it's 16 miles, 17 miles per case.
Yeah, I've got no problem with that.
Okay, all right, so I think, I think councilman Krueg...
Put the radius in there or per mayor or police chief discretion?
Yes, absolutely, yes, okay. You got that?
Got it.
Okay, very good, all right. Not any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like sign. Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Damian Johnson, city engineer.
John's bringing y'all packets, I'm going to have to step my game up and bring y'all some information. Just to kind of give you an update on our projects, you know, we continue to make good progress on the water treatment plant design. We have reached 100% design. Interestingly enough, we had a meeting, some questions came up about our current intake design. We had a meeting at the health department yesterday, and the health department kind of threw us a curveball and was going to allow us to do something they originally said they were not, so we're going to actually take a step back and relook at our current intake design and with their allowance of changing the type pump, we're looking at using, with the potential to save three or four million dollars, so that's definitely, you know, warranted in investigating, and if that's an option, we will, we will most definitely pivot and make the adjustments to the plans before construction starts. So, you know, that's kind of a, was a pleasant surprise, that was unexpected. Our, the Parks Project continues to, they continue to develop plans. We had a meeting a week or so ago where the planning team for the Parks Project and the water treatment plant and the both contractors were all there. It was very productive. I think both teams are going to work well together. There's a lot of work that happened, kind of spider-webed with each other, so it's very important that, that all parties are cooperative and we work, we are very careful with our schedules and smart so that we don't have, we don't want one, one project to build something, and then the other one come in and tear it up, or, or something along those lines, or create delays because of scheduling conflicts and that kind of stuff. We have, I'm sure some people have noticed, out in the community, I...
We have, I'm sure some people have noticed, out in the community, I think we, the mayor brought it up the last council meeting, our city aid paving is happening throughout the community, there'll be some milling and then some overlay work, significant amount of work, about $600,000 worth of overlay, so that's, that's a lot of, lot of overlay. We should see some streets that are in pretty ragged shape be very, very much improved once that's done. And as far as just regular daily operations, the, the water treatment construction has pretty much, group has moved out to the new Public Works Building. We have sold those metal structures through the auction process and fared better than we thought we might, and so those should be removed in the next several, you know, month or two to allow construction of the new water treatment facilities that will be coming. Real construction probably won't start there till January, but it'll be coming. As far as anything else goes, I don't really have anything, both the treatment plants are working fine, you know, our maintenance screws are, work, work a lot of hours at the water treatment plant, but we're gonna keep her together for about three more years and be glad when we get to retire her. Anything else? Y'all have any questions for me? All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Damon. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Kyle Christopher with the Eagle Mountain Property Association. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, let me, I'm gonna put you on hold just a minute, Kyle. Let's get Chief McCollum up here.
Well, April, we started back on our inspections and stuff. We actually had 49 calls. It's not a whole lot, thank goodness, we had zero structure fires this month. We helped the ambulance service with medical CS four times, had 12 rescue runs, had 117 inspections. The guys did 450 hours of training combined and had five grass fires and stuff. We did get the new truck ordered. They've sent renditions of the stripes and stuff and the lettering on it and everything. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty sharp. We're buying, I know the last couple of months, we've done several of the rope rescue, high angle rescue stuff, we've actually ordered some stuff in, and we're starting to get that high angle rescue stuff, rope, ropes and hardware and stuff for that, we're trying to get all that in. We're in the process, we had a captain retire, so when a captain retires, it goes all the way from the top to the bottom, we have to promote a captain, a lieutenant, and also hire, hire or promote a firefighter, so we're in, in that process of doing that right now. I think everything's working out, we got some new people on the department, I think they're really gonna be an asset to the city and the department, but that's about all that's going on with us. Y'all have any questions?
Any questions for Chief? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Kyle. and they are, and I'm gonna go ahead and let you speak on behalf of that, if they're looking at the possibility of installing speed tables in the, in the neighborhood. So, Kyle, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you and kind of let you tell us where...
Appreciate that, Mayor.
And be kind and everything.
Yes, sir, coming on behalf of the Eagle Mountain Property Association owners, and so what we're looking at doing, you know, to improve the walkability of our neighborhood, you know, that's becoming a more hot topic, obviously, not, not just in Eagle Mountain, but across the, across the city, we have a lot of walkers in that neighborhood, that not, not just residents, but now with the new boardwalk trail and some of our, our greenway system flowing into the, into the neighborhood, lots of walkers going up and down those areas. Unfortunately, with that, there are no sidewalks, and so those walkers are on the street, and quite frankly, we've got just a couple areas that are really problem spots for speeding. And what it does is, it does certainly create a pretty scary situation for people who are on, on the side of the street. Now, we do have some sharrows, if you will, that kind of a walking lane, but guys, we do, we just, unfortunately, we have a couple areas that just, the natural maybe layout of the land, whether it's downhill or kind of a straight stretch, it allows for people to pick up speed, and unfortunately, some people just don't, don't aid or don't yield to those walkers, and then, you know, they, it creates a pretty scary situation for, for the area. And so, again, what we have looked to do is, through the funds of the Eagle Mountain Property Association, is to completely fund the installation of at least four of speed tables. Now, these, these speed humps that you have in front of you were designed out by Atlas Asphalt. They actually put this exact design up on Shambly and South Side. There was a real, real bad spot, real big straight stretch, I believe, up in that subdivision, and they installed one of those there. But it's a proven design, it, it works, it's one of the surefire ways to slow someone down, and the proposed location's, now the exact marking of that location hasn't been set yet, we wanted to, you know, get your feedback on that, but we were gonna get more feedback from Atlas Asphalt and, you know, where exactly they would go, but roundabout would be on Eagle Mountain Boulevard, just past the Y, where from Woodmont to Eagle Mountain Boulevard, as you start coming down the hill, closer to the pond, if you're familiar with that area, that's an easy spot for people to pick up speed, couple blind spots there. The other one would actually be right, very close to, and again, we're gonna work with Parks Department, Atlas, on this one, where the new boardwalk trail actually enters into Aberdeen Drive. Right now, again, we have a very, very nice boardwalk that's leading you right into a downhill slope that if someone wasn't paying attention, you know, we could have a situation there. But somewhere on that, the other, the other location would be near the Eagle Mountain School. Now, again, that maybe work with them on maybe particular location, we definitely thought maybe at least after, if you're familiar with the graveyard, that's right after the Eagle Mountain School, spot right there, definitely protect that area, and that is a big straight stretch as well. The other one is kind of more of a floating design, whether it be a little bit further up on Eagle Mountain Boulevard, closer to the, oh, I'm trying to think, like the Aberdeen or the LeMond turnoff in there, because that is a very long straight stretch, also downhill. But again, this is a project we've been working on for a while, we want to definitely improve the walkability of the neighborhood, and with more future projects, you know, kind of the lines and grant funds to expand the greenway trail from its current location to, up to the school, and maybe eventually down to Walmart, we, we think this would be something definitely useful, but obviously, this is a city street, and we wanted to make sure and get feedback from, from the council and a blessing and anything you guys may think about on this.
Okay. Damon, you had mentioned four, and you talked about three locations.
Yes, the other location, Scott, was kind of that floating location, possibly by LeMond, LeMond turn on Eagle Mountain Boulevard. We actually put out, or I put out a, you know, kind of a feedback on Facebook amongst the, the community there, and those are a lot of the, kind of the four hotspots right there.
How much do they cost?
Two of them are at least $11,000, so between four, I think, the more you get, the kind of cheaper they get, just because this equipment, you guys know more than anybody, is, is, it's hard to get fired up, but more than likely for about four, it's, we're probably looking at about $20,000.
Okay, Kyle, let me ask you this, are these permanent?
These would be permanent, yes. Good, very good point there. So, this is the permanent option to where they actually mill into the asphalt and lay them that way, I think that's probably why they're more expensive, but, you know, we've looked at options at the, the rubber speed tables, and I like those as well, they would probably be much more affordable. The issue is Atlas, I don't believe will install those for us, and we don't really have that, we wouldn't have the, the labor, I guess you would will, to pay someone to do that. So, this is, this is the first design that Atlas was provided to us as, as an option.
Will they have signs and markings, both?
Yeah, this has markings, now, as signs, I'm sure we could look into that, it would be nice to have some signs put into it. These are very well marked. If you go up to that neighborhood in, in South Side, there are lines, you know, reflective white lines well before you hit them, and these really are not very aggressive, you know, this isn't something that's gonna bottom out a car, but you will know that you go over them and certainly slow you down before you get there.
So, are they kind of being, your labor and installation kind of being donated by Atlas, and then you're paying for the material?
No, no, that's everything.
That how much they are gonna charge? Okay.
Yeah, that's everything, we would just hire them as, just like a private contractor.
Gotcha.
Obviously, unique situation, we didn't want to come to the city and expect you guys to, to take that on, because that's, that's a major expense, and again, with the funds of the, the Property Association, this is something that we, we thought would be a good investment.
Do you think the, the majority of the citizens that live in that neighborhood are pro the...
Yeah, we've got a lot, we have.
Speed tables?
We absolutely have, we've got a lot of feedback, this is something that has been a, a constant complaint, if you will, hey, we got speeders, what do we do, what do we do? And by all means, you know, the, the city and the police department have done, have done their part, this is more just a proactive approach a little bit to taper down, in, in a lot of neighborhoods outside of our area, this is pretty common, especially in neighborhoods like, like Eagle Mountain, this is a pretty common occurrence to see speed tables like this.
So, if I get a call from the neighborhood, I can give your number?
Forward them, yeah, forward them my number, yeah, exactly.
Now, let me tell you, Shambly, I got calls from South Side complaining about the speed tables in South Side.
Yeah.
And so, that's the reason I'm asking.
Absolutely.
One other thing in which Damon and I have had this discussion, when they are put in permanently, it'll cost, if you do decide to have them removed, it will probably cost you, Damon, you can probably elaborate on that more than I could.
I mean, I think from talking with Lance, he thought it probably cost twice as much than that.
Easily, I can see that, yeah. And so, again, I mean, we, the, the community or the POA would be more than open to the large rubberized ones, it would just be the labor piece of that. Now, if that's something that, you know, the POA could contract with the city to pay for the labor, this isn't something that we expect the city or taxpayers to, to take on, because this isn't a neighborhood, and, but we would be more than open to that, Damon.
What, what speed would they be set for? I mean, I run over a variety of them in Fayetteville, and some of them, if you go over more than 15 or 20 miles an hour, it'll shake your teeth.
Yeah, the speed limit up there, I believe, is 30, yeah, and so, there's no, there's no intention to maybe lower that, this is just more to...
This is slow people down.
100%, yeah, there's some 60 mile an hour drivers up there very often.
Yeah, they'd have a real wake up.
Yeah.
Get rammed.
Would this, would this cause any problem with winter weather when we blade the road or anything like that?
It would be an obstacle.
It's something that you want to be aware of, whether it be the permanent and/or, and/or rubberized option, but it's, it's gotta be something, a puzzle that's been solved, because neighborhoods, again, much like this, this is very common, and they have, neighborhood up in Cabot comes to mind, Greystone, if you've ever been in that area, these are everywhere on the city streets up there, and they work, they truly do work at the end of the day, so.
So, Kyle, the one on Shambly, is it built to these specs? Where it starts and peaks at three inches?
You're exactly right, exactly these specs.
Of course, we use brine for now...
I'm sorry, oh, yeah, yeah.
...for the brine, so we don't, we try to not have to blend the brine as much as the brine created.
Sure.
And, you know, what the mayor said, one thing maybe to consider would be maybe the temporary, or the pre-manufactured ones temporarily, just to be sure, hey, we're happy, and I'm, I'm just, the way to think about it is, I've improved the location and made it aside, and six months, that's awkward, like, whatever.
It's a good point, now, and we're more than welcome, or more than open to that, we just didn't know quite where to turn as far as, you know, it's hard to find a turnkey operation, like you were saying, of, we can order the mats, I could probably have them delivered to my house, but then what? Because again, we're, we're trying to do our best not to, not, not to expect the, the city to take on any more, but it is, we would be more than, we would be more than happy to contract with, you know, labor maybe that the city was willing to do as far as putting in temporary ones, I think it's, it's more so just...
Yeah, we could, we could have that discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. This is more so just concept at this point, and then we would want to move in, again, working with, with Damon and other folks on, if, if we thought the concept would be approvable, then, then work on something that would work for everybody.
Okay. Damon, is this something that the council needs to, you know, vote on? I know it's our street, city streets, you know, once they're built and everything, is this just a...
I don't think that the, the council would...
Yeah, right.
Do our, are there any issues with the way our street specifications are written, that this would have to be addressed in those before we could do something like this?
I don't think it would. We don't have, they're not, we don't actually have table, I don't think we have, or in our specifications.
So, it's just not, not in there? Okay, got you.
Have you talked to the neighbors, pretty much, you said?
Yeah, we did, we've put out, I mean, we've had several, this has been kind of on the table, several meetings for a couple of years now, our community meetings, and then even a recent post out on the Eagle Mountain Facebook page, if you will, Fred, to get feedback on it. But I love the idea, I really, I think the, I like the idea of the rubber options, because they would probably be more affordable anyways, and then like Damon said, it would give us the ability to, if, you know, you don't place it absolutely where you want it, then you're kind of stuck with it, and so, I do think that'd be something maybe we could work out together and find a, find a solution there, but at the end of the day, we, we just want to make it clear that the association did want to incur any costs that would be associated with that.
Damon, is this something that the city can do, install, I mean, are we capable of installing these?
Yeah, I think we could. I'd like to have a little time to be able to actually go up and look at that one on Shambly and things like that. Okay. I think that'd probably be a good idea for us to go ahead and not make the decision tonight.
Absolutely.
But that way, we can let the council go up there.
And we'll chat a little bit more too on those temporary options, I'll get with Damon and see what that would maybe kind of look like, labor wise, from the city and...
Next, Councilman Lee. We can come back, I think that's a good idea. You go to Fayetteville, they're, they have a sign saying, you know, you have speed bump coming up, and they're marked with chevrons, and when, when they say you've got one coming up, you better slow it about 15, 20 miles an hour. It will shake you out of it. I accidentally went over about 35 one time, going somewhere, and it just about threw me out of my car. You, you need to pay attention when you, you know, I would start with one or two of them, get people used to them, and then place them in the other place.
Absolutely, but yeah, this is more so just bringing to you guys the concept, we'll, we'll iron out all those details and, before we take action.
Yeah.
It's good. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, thank you, Kyle. Okay, next on the agenda is an executive session to discuss the promotion or an employ. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, we are in executive session. Okay, coming out of executive session, three different employees were actually considered. No consensus has been made at this time. Hopefully we'll be making an announcement here real soon. We are looking at hiring a financial director and a deputy clerk and so, well, a deputy clerk this time.
Oh, at this time.
Yeah, at this time. And yeah, we're not going to replace you yet, Denise. You're still good, you're still good. But anyway, let's go ahead and move forward. Next on the agenda is the financial report as usual. If you have any questions or comments, don't hesitate to give me a call or Ms. Johnston a call. Let's move into mayor comments. And next regular meeting will be May the 28th. That will be the day, right after Memorial Day. Also, did anyone have the opportunity to go by? Because I forgot it, I did not. 445 Bluff View, we're going to check on that street light there, about possibility of either removing it or moving it maybe to the corner. Did anyone have that opportunity to go by there?
I'll be off with the, I forgot.
Make yourself a note that. And now, with that being said, in mayor comments, of course, I, you know, I want everybody to keep the Bryant family in your prayers.
Who?
The Bryant, Steve Bryant family. Steve Bryant family. Also, with very mixed emotions, we have a resignation from one of our longest serving council members and Dr. Doug Matthews. And like I said, I told Doug, I said, the only way that you will be able to retire, and it's been 20, what, 23, 24 years, 20 plus, 20 plus years?
20 plus years.
So, but-
I think I served four years on the planning commission and I've been here-
Told him I definitely wanted to keep his number on speed dial. He's been a wealth of knowledge and has been definitely a good friend. So, Dr. Matthews, do you want to say a few words?
I've enjoyed being on the council. I've, I've enjoyed with, working with Denise and the girls. I've enjoyed working with two different mayors.
Mine are your favorite though.
You're my favorite, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to get that out.
And so, you know, when I came on the council, it was not what it is now. It was a zoo. We worked an hour figuring out how to buy a lawn mower. And I look back at that and I say, how in the world did we get? And so I had to go, Rick came in here wanting to build the, all the stuff that he built and I said, we've got to build a wastewater plant. And we're still under a constrained administrative order. We still don't have it off. It's been 20 years and I don't know when we're going to get off of that. But we started that and now we worry about a lot of other things that we need to be worrying about and I've just seen it change so much over the last few years. And where we came from was just, it's hard to believe that we're where we are now. And Denise knows what I'm talking about. I remember her used to sitting with us and we used to work on that budget forever.
Just take a dollar off of this, just like a dollar off of that.
Not 300, 299.
And so, but I've enjoyed it and, but it's time for me to step aside and let somebody else have my spot. I've done it 24 years or something, so it's time for somebody else to have the, the joy of getting to make all these decisions.
Two.
Two?
I think. Yeah. Yeah. And we definitely will, Dr. Matthews, we will celebrate you retiring from the council and so definitely do not want you to be a-
Yes, I'm the oldest one.
Yeah, definitely do not want you to be a stranger.
I won't.
But with that, Dr. Matthews' seat is vacant and there will be an appointment if anyone in our city is interested in that appointment. It's Ward, what Ward are you?
Two.
Ward, Ward two, position two.
Position two.
Okay. So, but if you are, send in your resumes or drop them by and-
It's downtown.
About the next council meeting, so we'll give everyone all of next week to get those resumes in and we will try to get an appointment hopefully at our next, next council meeting. So, but anyway, let's go ahead and move on. So liaison reports. Council comments.
I just want to say thank you to the police department. I had to utilize their services a few weeks ago and it was right before Chief Scarborough took over and his guys at the time were fantastic. They came, they dealt with the situation. They were very calm and I could not be more proud of the three officers that came to my house. It, it was unbelievable and they did a fantastic job and he should be very proud of them.
Ms. Crupricks?
Dr. Matthews, thank you for your service to the city. We appreciate everything.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yeah, just second one. That's what I said. Dr. Matthews, it's, it's been an honor getting to, to serve with you and so wish you all the best.
I remember when y'all came in. I've been here. I remember where all of you come from.
Mr. Crewe?
Doug, in 2003, I came on with you and nine o'clock was about the average time we get out of here. Remember that?
Yeah.
If we got out of here for nine o'clock, we were very happy and-
Budget was not a favorite time.
No, budget's not a favorite time, so there was four new city council members came on, me, you, John Cook and Dana. And it was, it's, it's been a real ride, but as a lot of y'all know, I was gone for four years temporarily and came back on. But Doug, it has changed quite a bit and I appreciate all you've done.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
And I served under two mayors. I think Rick, you're, you're a little bit better than the other one.
Let's not pick favors now.
And I'm still sitting in the same place, right next to them. And then when I got on here, they said, you've got to take care of the mayor and I said, I will. And so I haven't changed my position, I'm still in the same spot.
You took care of Joe, Gene X.
Anything else?
No, I don't have anything. I've said all I'm going to say.
Ms. Cool?
Just echo all the other sentiments. Thanks for your service, Dr. Matthews.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Also, I would like to mention before adjournment that we do have a planning and zoning position open as well. And that is, if you are interested also, please contact, drop by resume here at City Hall and we will be filling that position as well. So if that, all that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. I'll be back.
This concludes our meeting tonight. The mayor and city council thanks you for tuning into the meeting. Our air times are Monday, 7:00 PM, Thursday, 6:00 PM, Friday, 11:30 AM and all other days, 4:00 PM. Again, our city council says thank you and good night.